We're going to call this meeting of the committee, the whole meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please, Jesse?
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Present.
Excellent. Item C, approval of the agenda.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, excellent. First item on the table is student, staff, and community recognition, and we have some tonight. First up, Leah Foley. And Leah is nominated by Dennis Shears. Right up front. There we go. Oh, no, now I'm in the picture. Leah has filled a much-needed position in our district. She shows up each day with a smile on her face and a positive attitude. She splits her time between each of the buildings to ensure the students' needs are being met. Leah approaches every situation with students' best interest in mind. Her compassion and kindness are appreciated by staff, students, and families. She goes above and beyond each day. Our district is truly fortunate to have her. Thank you. Our next one is Leslie Gudmundson. I hope I said that right. If not, I am so sorry. I even practiced. So how do you say it?
Goodman.
Goodman. I made it too complicated. I apologize. Nominated by Mr. Fiesel. So Leslie was our long-term PE sub for the first semester. She went above and beyond to do what was best for our students. She was team-oriented, brought positive energy, and did an excellent job providing high-quality instruction in our middle school PE department. Spooner Middle School was fortunate to have Leslie as a member of its staff. Thank you. Item B is referendum project update, as was listed in board docs. Does anybody have any questions on those updates?
None here.
I see, seeing that there's not any questions, we're going to receive and place those on file. Moving to item C, Character Strong presentation. Mr. Fiesel.
So the Character Strong program, if you remember, was approved at the board level, I believe, in August, pre-K through four. And it's actually a pre-K through five curriculum. And we're coming tonight to just share a little background as to why we'd like to implement it with our fifth-grade students. Just kind of some background again. It's a research-based social and emotional learning and character curriculum. So we're really focusing on those character traits and developing some decision-making within those processes. The pre-K five component is called Purposeful People. So it's a curriculum that offers opportunities for exploration in social interaction, problem-solving, conflict resolution, decision-making, and self-regulation. So all skills that we're working on on a day-to-day basis. This would be another layer for us, kind of within our PBIS program, that aligns really well with our mission statement, preparing each student for a successful future. So it wouldn't be something completely new, change of gears that we're doing. It would just be another layer of curriculum and support for our students, working through some of these decision-making skills. Currently, it's implemented at the elementary level. Fifth grade's the highest that it can go to. And so we would just like to take a look at implementing it with our fifth grade. Just a quick reminder of what it's not. It's not going to change what our PBIS program is already doing. It's just going to be a tool to kind of strengthen some of the things we have in place. It's not a platform for us to focus on hot topics. It's designed for elementary students at an elementary-based level, in which our fifth-graders oftentimes do fall within that elementary-based level. So focus is just giving age-appropriate tools for our students to kind of help themselves and others be the best they can be, and really focusing on, you know, making the best choices and decisions each day that they can. How and when would we implement? We'd like to begin, if possible, as soon as potential board approval for the fifth-grade component. We provide families information in March, and again, next school year in September. It'd be incorporated into our rails time, one to two times a week. Parents will receive newsletters to outline what their child is learning from the curriculum. And then staff implementing the Character Strong program will receive some additional training and materials through the program, in collaboration with one another, just to ensure as much consistency among classrooms as possible. And it sounds like some initial feedback from the elementary has been really positive with the program. So just, you know, if there's more information, we included the link there. Again, this was something in August that was brought forward. We're just here looking to add the fifth-grade component at the middle school.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Is there any extra cost to this, to add it to the fifth grade? I don't believe there is, but... And how are you measuring the success of this program? Is there any way to quantify that?
Okay. Okay. That's the same program that elementary was running that we... Was that a celebration thing that we were at? Was that a part of that program?
I believe you were at the Rails Rally, correct?
Okay, that's kind of a monthly superhero thing that's kind of off of our PBIS, our character traits. This is same thing, just a little supplemental tool that goes along with our PBIS thing. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. You had a question?
So I was just going to ask, I know it said Rails time, teachers and stuff, but would yourself and other guidance counselors be involved with it since we all know that mental health and stuff is really probably at the forefront of everyone's mind and just a continuing issue?
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So what I am, what we are looking for, would be looking for, is a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting for approval. Do we have a consensus? All in favor? Yes. Any opposed? All right, we'll move that to the regular board meeting. Thank you, guys. Next up is item D, Discuss Technology Update slash E-Rate Project. Dr. Aslan?
So I'm going to pinch it for Mr. Miller on this one. He had a matter come up late this afternoon and was unable to be here. Annually, he comes before you to discuss E-Rate funding, which is federal funding oriented towards technology. And as you can see from his memo, there are some deep discounts that we had the opportunity to take advantage of through the E-Rate funding. Well, you know, if you've been on the board for a while, or you have kids in school or work in a school, you know the impact of the supply chain on a lot of what we do in the school. And certainly, that is true with technology. So part of Mr. Miller accelerating, bringing his E-Rate plan and request for the year, really revolve around that supply chain issue and just knowing that some waits for some equipment can be six to nine months. So also, just the future of E-Rate, which has been around for a long time, is a little murky in the future, so wanting to take advantage of that. So as you'll see in Mr. Miller's memorandum, he'd look for board authorization to move forward with the proposed network equipment that's included in his attachment contingent upon E-Rate approval. I will field your questions to the best of my abilities at this time.
Are there any questions?
It would cost the school $29,000, basically, out of 100 and some, 145?
That is correct, yeah. Net to the school is about an 80% discount on that equipment.
Do we have that in the budget right now?
We can cover that, yes.
The only reason I ask is if, for some reason, our referendum doesn't pass. I know technology is on the chopping block if we don't get that referendum passed. So would this be part of that, or is this over and above?
This would be in advance of that and would, you know, hypothetically, would be kind of the, you know, the last opportunity to do some upgrades if we were to find ourselves in a very difficult financial situation.
Okay, thanks.
So I had a similar question, I think, but in here, the presentation alludes to the fact that the grant money, or it may not be recurring like it has been in the past, and we all know costs and stuff are increasing. I guess if it wasn't done now, when was it projected that it would have to be happened? I know infrastructure needs improvement all the time, but what was the timeline?
I can't give you a specific on the timeline, other than this request expedites what would have been a part of an ongoing campaign, so to speak, of upgrading this hardware.
Yes, Paul?
Was this, I see the list of items that he's proposing. Was this stuff that he feels we need at this time, or, and I guess I'm questioning, should we be asking for more if it's going to go away?
I think what he has done is developed a prioritized list of equipment that is needed to continue to provide that high level of service to students and staff with technology at this time.
Is it limited, a certain amount for each district, or?
It is. I can't give you particulars on it, but, you know, it's kind of a closed-ended figure that districts are allocated.
So this is an allocation, this is an application where he's asking for this amount? We may or may not get it here.
That's correct, yep.
I think I have a follow-up to that. So then would there be a second request if the grant didn't come through? We'd have to approve the full purchase, correct? Because at this point, we would be moving or looking to approve the $29,000.
So we would, yeah, we would not, if the grant were not approved, then we would be back with a different plan. You know, this would be a pretty significant purchase if we're just coming out of a general fund budget.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the clarifying, because I thought maybe it was approved already, but...
Any other questions? Great discussion. What we'd like to do, then, is do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting, and if so, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? All right, we will move that to the regular board meeting. Next up, we have our item E, is Discuss Safe at School Plan Update, and Mr., oh, you're already, Mr. Hopkey, you're already up here. All right, you're fast.
Roger that.
Roger that.
You're moving. All right, so when we started down this path in July of 2020, hard to believe it's been that far so far, but that's when we came up with the Safe at School Plan originally. And what we determined at that point in time is every six months, we would come together, take a look at it, do updates as needed, okay? And we're at our six-month point from the last time, which was September, that we took a look at it, did some updates and whatnot. So just going over a few things again, with positive cases and that isolation and exclusion. In September was our last major update, talking about positive cases. Washburn County takes the lead on that, and they notify people, let us know what's going on as far as what's necessary for excluding students or staff that are positive. Household contacts, they're not required to quarantine like they were originally back in 2020, although the suggestion is wearing a mask for the 10 days. Once again, that's per Washburn County guidelines. That is no change from the September update. Okay? Likewise, with timelines for positive cases, or those that test positive, rather, symptoms, day zeros, when they start exhibiting those symptoms, they isolate through day five, day six. They can end their isolation, move on. If they're, you know, showing that improvement, suggesting that they're wearing masks up through day 10. Okay, once again, that is following the guidelines set by Washburn County. Contact tracing, we're not doing that. And then testing, we've had it available for some that are in the school that are showing positive and they're requesting it. Once again, that's no major change from the September 2022 update. All right, last. The communication, Washburn County takes care of the communications for those that are tested in specific institutions or entities that do testing, home testing. Washburn County hasn't been involved in it, but people are contacting the district when they test positive, okay? And we're constantly in communication with the Health Department, just following up on notifications that we receive. Once again, this is no change from September. However, getting into some of the trends, this is what we're seeing. We've had six staff members test positive in the past couple months, okay? Otherwise, we've had other staff that have tested positive for other things, like the RSV or influenza or whatnot. So there's lots of illness and keep talking about the trifecta. Is that a good way to put it? So it's multiple illnesses that are out there and is seeing a spike across the country because people haven't been out and about as they have been in the past. Thirty-five reported positive students since October 31st, so since the beginning of school. That's what we're getting. And then most of these are coming from people that are conducting home tests, because they're checking themselves out. Do they actually have COVID, or do they have some other illness? Okay, and we're thinking that that increase in other illnesses is what's prompting people to do the home testing. So that's it in a nutshell. Sorry, I don't have any, you know, major changes here, but...
Are there any questions for Mr. Hopkey?
All right.
No, no, at all.
So just, boy, a little different request than we've had for a couple years with this. So at this point, we know that we would ask the board to take some formal action at their regular meeting. As I understand it, that action would be just to make no change to the Safe at School Plan.
That is correct. There's no real impetus to make any changes at this point. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, do we need to keep reevaluating it every six months, or is that just a good standard practice? I mean, maybe that's not on the table right now, but just saying.
So it is a requirement for school districts that took the SER funding, so it will remain a requirement into 2024. Check.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hopkey.
Thank you.
So what we're looking for is a consensus to move this to the board, regular board meeting, and it would be to approve with no changes. All those in favor of moving it to the board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move that to the regular board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Hopkey. Item F, Discuss Elementary and Secondary School Education Relief, SER III Plan. Dr. Aslan?
So parallel to the previous agenda item, we do have an obligation to come forward periodically with, which is now our SER III plan. In board docs, you have the allocation of positions and full-time equivalents that we have funded with SER III for the current school year. And there's no change from when you were briefed on this last.
Are there any questions for Dr. Aslan?
These are funded through next year, is it?
They're funded through the end of the current fiscal year.
Okay. All right, any other questions? If there are none, we are going to receive and place this on file. All right, excellent. Item G, Discuss Second Reading of Volume 31, Number Two, Neola Policy Updates, Fourth Group. I'm assuming everybody's had an opportunity to look at those, and I am looking to have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We will move those to the regular board meeting. Moving to item H, Discuss Second Reading of Volume 31, Number Two, Neola Policy Updates to Policy 2414, Human Growth and Development. We're looking for the same, to move that to the regular board meeting. If there's no questions, and are there any questions, first of all? All right.
No.
Do we have, all those in favor of moving that to the regular board meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we will move that to the regular board meeting. Item I is to Discuss Girls Hockey Co-op Renewal.
So annually, these co-op agreements are required to be acted on by the school board. As you can see, the girls hockey co-op renewal, which we are a participant with Hayward being the host school, comes before you for renewal, so...
Are there any questions?
We have one student involved with that from Spooner, is that correct?
At this time, I believe you are correct.
That is correct, to the best of my knowledge. It looks like Mr. Shears is confirming that figure.
Has it been a successful program so far? I mean, is it working out? Any problems that you know of, or? Who do they play? I mean, there's a lot of schools that are together in this, so who's left to play? Uh-huh, okay. Wow.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions? I would like to point out that it is, I think, as a school district, we do everything that we can do to give our students some great opportunities, and this would point out one of those that you wouldn't normally have, but to see that individual be able to go all the way through their senior year and potentially more coming up, I just want to point out that, you know, that's a pretty cool thing. So what I'm looking for, if there's no other questions, is to have a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting, and if so, are we all in favor of that? Would you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We will move that to the regular school board meeting. Item J is Discuss Establishment of Activity Account for the Astronomy Club. And I don't know if everybody's had an opportunity to see that yet, or if you have, are there any questions?
How many students are in the club right now? Any idea?
We'll get that number and follow up with Mr. Weiss on it. Yeah, yeah, this, and again...
I think it's a good idea, myself.
Apologies for the late information, but this was a very late ad this afternoon, so...
So her goal is to be able to take students to, what do we call it, a place where you watch the stars?
Planetarium, yeah.
So I guess I couldn't share that much. But anyways, that's her goal, and she's trying to raise money, and she wants to create an account to...
Just procedurally, before an organization can fundraise, they have to have an activity count to deposit those funds in. So that's all that's being asked of the board at this point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shears, Dr. Aslan. Any other questions? So what we're looking to do is, if we have consensus, we're going to move this to the regular board meeting. Might have a few more additional details by then, but in the meantime, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We will move that to the regular board meeting. Item K, 30, 60, 90 Day Planning. Everybody had an opportunity to look at that? Any concerns, questions? All right, excellent. Then move to item L, Financial Update. Dr. Aslan?
Looking at the month of December 2022, so a fairly significant amount of income, $1,248,311.90, and that put the on-hand amount, $1,926, $696.29, and driven largely through a significant DPI food service claim and an SER II claim and an... and an ESER III claim. So expenditures, $1,311,690.96. Cash on hand at the end of the month, $615,005.33. And just to contrast that, cash on hand at the end of December 2021, $249,681.1. And again, some significant food service and ESER claims driving the discrepancy between what we saw this past December and December back in 2021.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Aslan? All right.
Can I ask one?
Yes, go ahead.
Just the ESER income that's coming in, so that's income, or that has to be paid out through the end of the school year to the people, the positions that you commented were funded through the end? That's still gotta be...
Yeah, that's correct. So ESER's a reimbursement program, so, yeah, the district is seeking reimbursement for those wages and benefits paid.
Thank you. Any other questions? Excellent. Moving to item M, and that's Approval of the Vouchers. Has everybody had an opportunity to see those? All right. And what we're looking to do is to have a consensus to move that forward to the consent agenda at a regular board meeting. All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? That will be at the regular board meeting. All right, we are looking to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.851(c). Two, consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government, governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, go into closed session.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will move into closed session at 6:06.
Okay, we're now into open session. It is 7:24 PM. During the closed session, what we did was we approved a position for the community ed coordinator. So approved, an offer to contract for the middle school principal. And item C was taken as an update with no action.
All right, thank you, Paul. Last item then on the agenda is have a motion to adjourn.
I moved second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.